Speaker of the scheduled meeting in Portobello District on this Wednesday, June 21st, 2023 at 6:30.
Thank you. In the pledge of allegiance, this evening I'd like to propose to be Kathy G., who is the Director on the Rosemont Community Foundation Board, and a Coordinator for the Rosemont Community Police Project. And then following the pledge, Planning Technician Andrew Saltmarmy will do an introduction.
I'm pleased to be here with Mr. Goddard, the United States of America. The chief of the public stands one nation under God and in the midst of the two and us.
Kathy is a Director on the Rosemont Community Foundation. She's the Board Director. I met Kathy last year as we began working together on the Rosemont Community Police Project, which we concluded earlier this month in honor of just the last weekend. I worked with Kathy throughout every step of the project. Working with Kathy, I really noticed her kind attitude and the obvious care she has for her community. It's been a true pleasure to work with her throughout the entire process. I just want to say on behalf of CRPD, thank you Kathy and the Rosemont Community Foundation for viewifying CRPD's parts with your project. And we look forward to working together in the future.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. So that's what we got. Danny, catch that.
Thank you. We will consider any requests, 2449 requests, and seeing none, no action taken on that item.
Roll call.
Director Madison.
Here.
Director Langen.
Here.
Secretary Sloan.
President.
Director Danzel. Chair Yewen.
Chair Yewen.
Thank you. Members of the public may address the Board on district topics not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It's a violation of state law for the Board to discuss or take action on non agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff. And I see no requests.
All right. Anyone out there? So we will move on to the consent calendar.
Thank you. Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chairperson will consider a request for discussion on the item prior to approval of the consent calendar. And Chair Yewen, I would like to pull item C1 for a separate vote requesting an extension from Director Langen.
All right. Do you know it? All right. Does anybody, you know, any of the public here, any questions about consent calendar? Anyone on the Board have any questions to discuss there? All right. Anybody care to make a motion for C2 through five?
I move, I move that we a motion approved on the consent calendars, C1, no, C2, C3, C4, and C5.
All right. Motion by Secretary Sloan for C2 through C5. Second, second by Vice Chair, it's called the Vice President, Vice Chair Danzel. Roll call.
Director Madison.
Aye.
Director Langen.
Aye.
Secretary Sloan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Aye.
Chair Yewen.
Aye.
All right. Would anybody care to make a motion for C2?
I made my question for item C1.
That's good. Motion by the Vice Chair Danzel, directed by Director Madison. Roll call.
Director Madison.
Aye.
Director Langen.
Stay.
Secretary Sloan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Aye.
Chair Yewen.
Aye. All right. Moving on to the site presentation.
Thank you. Item D1 is a presentation by Jeff Morrow, USA Softball Sacramento Commissioner, of a grant award to the Cordova Recreation Park District. And I'll turn it over to Recreation Supervisor to Nina Siner to do an introduction. She has some photos to show us.
Well, good evening, Chair Yewen and Board Directors and CRPD staff. I'm pleased to be here tonight to introduce the USA Softball Commissioner, excuse me, Jeff Morrow. Jeff has served as the Commissioner of USA Softball Sacramento since January 2022. Jeff previously served as the Adult Softball Supervisor of the Greater Sacramento Softball Association, GSSA. And before that, he worked for the USO for many years and for El Canino prior to that. CRPD works closely with USA Softball Sacramento and GSSA in conjunction with our Adult Softball Leagues. One of the goals of USA Softball Sacramento is to provide resources for public agencies for improvements in projects to softball facilities. Therefore, they offer an annual public agency grant to support that effort. CRPD has been lucky enough to be awarded that grant throughout the years since 2013, receiving a combined, excuse me, a combined total of $6,500. So I have some pictures here that I want to share, projects that this grant has supported. So for the 2023 grant, we have on the screen, so it is those chairs and umbrellas. We got three of those. Those are going to use to help protect our store keepers from the elements during our adult softball leagues. So that's been agreed. These are ball and bat racks that are in each of our three dugouts. Excuse me, six dugouts on the three fields for all the players to use, which have been huge help. These are fans that provided. It's very warm out there. So that's been great for the players and stay cool. And then last year, these 300-foot distant marker signs, that's what we, that's what we thought, used to find for that. So we have distant marker signs on each of the three softball baseball fields and the sports complex. So I think that's it, Jeff.
Thank you. As I said, my name is Jeff Morrow and I'm the Commissioner, CEO of the Greater Sacramento Softball Association. We do business as also as USA Softball Sacramento. We are a grassroots organization that works with all our member agencies to provide recreational and competitive softball leagues for both the youth and the adult in the greater Sacramento area. We are one of 64 state and metro associations across the country for USA softball, which is a national governing body of softball. But USA softball also is the pipeline for our USA national teams as well as our USA Women's Olympic softball team. Currently, the Greater Sacramento Softball Association has nearly 10,000 youth participating as well as coaches, as well as about 1,200 adult leagues playing throughout the Greater Sacramento area. And the Greater Sacramento area, our boundaries are fairly small. We're considered a metro rather than a state. But we go as far north as Woodland, as far south as Lodi, east to Cherokee, and South Lake Tahoe, and west to the Dixon Winter area. All in all, we serve as organizations in seven different counties. As a person, I need to do a lot of good things and things sometimes that are not so great, but tonight's one of the good things I need to do. And that's to assist one of our member agencies with what they hand up to help with their facility improvements. And the Greater Sacramento Softball Association, over probably like we say, the last 20-plus years, we've spent over a quarter million dollars that were given back to our member agencies in helping with the facility improvements. We find that as a great cause to help out everybody that's involved with, with the game of softball. And today, I'm here to award Cordova Recreation Park District, one of our 2023 grant award recipients, a $900 grant to assist them with their facility improvements. And I am here to answer any questions that you might have regarding GSSA or USA softball Sacramento.
Yes. Anybody have any questions? We are going to do a photo op.
Yes. I got one of the checks that we always like to do. We were here last year to do a presentation. You would like to do it again. We put it on our Facebook page that we show all our member agencies and the things that we do that we give back to our audience. So. All right.
What about the door?
Thank you.
Anything on this one?
And.
Senator.
That's sad.
That's mine.
Oh.
Yes, Jeff.
Do we want to put the best girl? It's right. Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna take a couple. Ready? So one, two, three. One, two, three.
Two, one.
Three, two, one.
Silly but sad.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Oh, that's, this is.
So Nina, you're now a hard landing.
I mean, I'm not gonna make it. No, I'll get children. She'll make it.
Enforcer.
Yeah.
Oh, these. The end of the minute. All right. So roll back in our seats. Excellent. I guess we want to item E committee.
Thank you. Item E1 is an ad hoc committee report for the CRPD City of Rancho on June 5th, and that's Chair Yewen and Vice Chair Danzel.
Right, Vice Chair Danzel. I'll let you go first. It was the first time we've met with the, the Diddy and I in quite a while, but it was a good meeting. It was a robust agenda for that day. I think we had seven, seven items on it, knowing we weren't going to get through all seven. We went to the, the topic list and went over things that we felt were most important. The one I would report out on today is that we talked to the city and knew what was going on and how our optimized plan was. So they understood what we were doing, why we were doing it, and some of the concerns that our community did have for us. They, the response back, I think, was, was well taken. Other than that, it was, it was good to meet. And here's some of the things the city had to say. I think they appreciated where we were coming from on the optimized plan. There were other, one other topic we could discuss, and I would like Chair Yewen to discuss that. We met with Kate Wood and Sarah Bond.
All right. Well, the other thing we talked about, one of the bigger topics was homelessness. I don't remember the sergeant or the officer that lived there talked about the homeless and their, kind of their, what they're doing and their coordination with the park district and one of the agencies, and they were very complimentary of where it was. That's more than. And how responsive he is and our staff is to any issues that come up and we're all together from every night here. And so that was very nice to hear. It had been a long time since we've talked with the city. I accept the last time we talked with the city. So it was good to get together. I'll piggyback a little bit off the optimized plan. Do we have a a plan to councilwoman, yeah, for us to present that to them at some point? Did we have that lined up? We are working with the principal, he's, he's to schedule something in later summer. Okay. So yes, that is to be announced. You know, we did talk briefly about was the Little League All-Strom Curve Lane is, is now kind of back burner. There's, there's more things going on or whatever, something of that nature. And we talked a little bit about the 20th anniversary, ours coming up. So it was a very nice meeting. It was educational, I think. I don't think they know that, I mean, it was something that he realized. The biggest takeaway, I think, one of them took away from it is we were talking about getting grant funding. And it's a very small area that we can do that in. And they were surprised. It's governed most parts of Rancho Cova eligible for grant funding for like Parker Green and things like that. Because the city's doing such a wonderful job and bringing up the media, they're kind of phones and things like that. So that was kind of an eye opener for one of them. So with that, hopefully a future in the later year, later summer, having the city optimized plan, that'd be nice. So that's all I have to say on that. So I guess we'll go on to E2.
Thank you. Item E2 is the standing committee report. The PMR, the Oversight Board meeting on June 8th, and that's Vice Chair Danzel and Director Madison.
Director Madison, you want to start or you want me to?
Oh, I'll go. I mean, we had a really good meeting, my first one. So very excited with the, I guess, the number of applicants was very, very positive. It was a big, big bunch. So we had some time to go through them. And quite a few of them were really qualified too. So that was good. So looking forward to bringing those recommendations to the Board here next month. We'll bring those names to the Board next month for approval.
Maybe not much more, more to say than yes, we did have, we, we have three zones that we're, we're looking at two for Rancho Cova, one for the Wilburger area. The candidates up in there were definitely highly qualified. It was looking at them and it's going to be, there's going to be some decisions that need to be made by this whole board on where we move forward. Though, but highly qualified. It was great to see that.
All right. Could we go, but can we go back? Apparently Secretary Sloan had a question about E1. Can we go back? What was your question?
Another question about, you mentioned the Lily complex was put on the back burner. What does that mean?
They put it on the back burner?
They just said there's no.
They're looking at some, they're looking at other things and.
They're looking at other facilities?
That's something that, it's just that it's not the, it's been put on, on the back burner for the moment. Yeah.
No, it was a decision.
My heart hopes so, yeah. Okay. All right. I guess we'll move on to P3.
Thank you. Item E3 is an ad hoc committee report for a park facility naming, which took place on June 15th, and that's Chair Yewen and Vice Chair Danzel.
Yes, I'll still. Sure. Okay. And for parks and facility naming, it's, that committee has come a long ways in the time that I've been here, how things have changed and what, what we're, what we're looking at and how, how those decisions are made. We did have, I don't remember, seven, eight that were brought to us by the public to look at and consider. One of my questions is currently when we look at parks, we get a a name from the developer, a name from staff, and then there's typically a third one that pops in there. And how is that going to work? And we discussed that. We're still going to get the first two. The third one, it's something the Board gets to decide whether we put a person's name on it or we stay with the developer's name. We, you know. So that was, and then out of that list, the qualified people or persons, you know, that'll be a decision for the Board. So that's just recommendation of the, of the committee of how, who moves forward after background checks and everything else. Because we're actually going to do that, not just naming, oh, 10 years down the line, here's some bad things. So it was, it was, it's a process and it's a good process. So we finally put it in place to move forward on this.
All right. Yeah, we had, we reviewed seven applications and we discovered there was actually an eighth one that we will come back at a later date to, to review and get in the process. So a very broad group of people. So it was nice. So in the process of vetting and all those good things, and we'll come back probably later. Okay. So then again, once we get through all of that background checking, not necessarily all those 88, 88 people will eventually end up on the last list. So but if some people have as an option, we'll have to name the park after somebody. It's just a list to have to consider bringing it after somebody. So.
Absolutely. Is there a checklist of certain criteria that are qualified? Questions to have a part in that?
There was some qualifiers on that. I don't know the specifics.
Well, you know, whether they were in political office or, you know, long time business owner, a long time supporter of the park.
The main was, was somehow tying them back to the parks and things of that nature or having it, correct me if I'm wrong, a substantial contribution to the community. So, but is that fair? Yeah, there are criteria, of course. And the evaluation of those applications was based on that criteria from this committee. They looked at the criteria and the ones that they're deciding to bring forward for background checks need that criteria. So yeah, that's.
This is approval by the full board.
Yes. Yeah. So yeah, once we get to that final list and say all of them make it through, then there'd be eight names and we'll go through whether we want to approve that list of eight. I would assume if they wanted to pull somebody off it, they could. It's not really a true, you remember? Yeah. Well, so the recommendation from this committee eventually will be vetted out. So they're at the process of, they have filtered the first round. The second round is they have said these folks have met the criteria and the eligibility to be moving on to the background check phase. And so we're doing some double checking with the applicants to make sure they're comfortable with that first. If they give us the green light, we will be doing the background checks. We're assuming everyone will clear. After they have officially cleared the background check, then we will be needing again to review that other application that came in afterwards that still is eligible and qualified. We have to do that. And then we also have to just verify the background checks to make sure that that list, original list, made that criteria for the background check to be offered on that list for the full board to consider whether they want that to be, those folks be considered for a possibility of a park being named after them. But it has been vetted out prior to it coming to the board. So you're not having necessarily a deep dive conversation about these folks. All of that background check and the filter has been put on by this committee.
But the two people that are on this ad hoc, they're not, they haven't decided who.
No, none of our committees are deciding committees. They are recommendation committees, like all of our ad hoc committees. I have been, they don't make the decision for the full board.
With these two people that are on this committee, you recommend, recommending one of these names to the three of us?
They'll be recommending the list. They'll be recommending the list. Say only, say only five of them agree they want to do it and then pass everything. And we would look at that list and then bring that list to the board. Right. And those five names plus.
If the three of us are not happy with any of them.
And then you would turn around and, and go with the community name, the one that the developer chose, the one the staff chose? Or you decide another name that night?
But we're all going to sit down as a board of five and.
Yeah.
Well, I just know because I, I, we have ideas we want to present to the.
But I, I would say as a qualifier, it would not be the opportunity for you to suggest a new name.
Oh, no.
That has not been in that process. Yeah. But yes, that is typically how we do all of our ad hoc committees. It is a recommendation type of committee, which brings those recommendations to the full board for a vote and a consideration.
All right. Good. All right. I think it looks like we will move on to I get all the shit here. Oh, public hearing. Thank you. Yes, public hearing. Item F1.
Thank you. We reached that portion of the meeting for our public hearing. Item F1 is to adopt resolution 22 slash 23 dash 46, approving the preliminary budget for the Cordova Recreation Park District for fiscal year 2023, 2024, and authorize the general manager to file with the county auditor controller. And Chair Yewen, if you would, just hearing.
About that part. All right. It is 6:55. So we'll open the public hearing at 6:55. Let's get all excited about the presentation. After I don't have presentation, I'm going to keep this.
Oh, you're going to keep it?
Short, sweet. Yeah. Because we spent an hour and a half on the workshop. So I was thinking about the highlights that came out of that. So good evening again, Chair Yewen and Board members. Tonight's preliminary budget, you know, we just had the workshop just recently. And so some of the highlights, again, the process starts in January. As of August, the final, that'll be our, our last step. Today, we're at the preliminary budget phase. And I'm excited to say that, you know, this budget incorporates services to the community for parks, facilities, recreation, along with future development. And more specifically, it includes six new parks going from 44 to 50, and then inventory, which is incredible, for additional full-time positions for supports and marks in administration, 2,900 additional part-time hours in recreational programming, mostly in audits, a potential cost of living adjustment of 3% for full-time staff, no additional debt, and stick with the debt that we have. It does discuss 35 capital improvement and maintenance projects that benefits 21 parks, five facilities, and one trail area. It has additions to our equipment and food vehicles for park services and road golf course. It does have a subsidy for villages, zip and dale area that will come from the general fund. There's one assessment that required it. The delivery of an optimized plan. And again, we're going to be celebrating 65 years of service for our community. So that's fantastic. Overall, this whole budget is $22,390,500, a little bit more than 1958. 17.3 for operations and debt, and then five million is going to go towards fixed assets of capital improvements and equipment. In the package, there's documents, supporting documents, this budget resolution to require county Sacramento forms that we have to turn in along the schedules. Account detail, the district-wide budget performance and proposal, they're used to seeing same format. It's also in there. And then a list of fixed assets for capital improvement projects and our equipment. It's a requirement that the county has that we pack that up. And so that's included. This budget will be adopted and filed in the ordinance to California code and with the county auditor controller's office. And that's basically my presentation.
Outstanding. All right. Any public comment?
I see no requests.
All right. You know, one of the others, we practically, so we will close the public hearing at 6:58. And we will move to any, oh, sorry, at the end of the dais with the Director Madison. Any questions? All right. Secretary Sloan. Vice Chair Danzel. And I have none either. Excellent. Would anybody care to make a motion?
I move that we adopt resolution 22, 23 dash 16, approving the preliminary by 46. 46, approving the preliminary budget for the Cordova Recreation Park District for fiscal year 2023 slash 24, and authorize the general manager to file with the county auditor controller.
I have a motion by Secretary Sloan. Wait a second.
Second. Second by Vice Chair Danzel. Roll call.
Director Madison.
Aye.
Director Langen.
Aye.
Secretary Sloan. Vice Chair Danzel.
Aye.
Chair Yewen.
Aye. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Great job. Thank you. All right. So have you ever done with that?
I have kind of a light question on that. What, how do you decide where the 5G towers go in parks? Or is that a part of the money? I know that Miller Park has a very large 5G power.
Yes, we do have a process. And so we're very community outreach and transparent. So the. Yes, uh, we do have a process, and so i- i- we're very, uh, community outreach and transparent, so the, the cell phone companies contact us. They fill out an application and then we open it up for, uh, public board meetings, and so that gives the public an opportunity to come and, and, and talk about it. The benefits and any, you know, barriers or, or concerns.
Dangerous.
Dangerous, yeah, anything that's on, on your mind, and so, uh, there's definitely, we, we believe in community outreach. And, and anyone that can see the tower or be impacted by the tower, obviously we want them to have a say, so that's part of the process.
So these are four, four new parks that you're going to be putting in?
Right, and then one more slated to have cell tower and, so.
And all in the Rancho area?
Yes, City of Rancho Cordova, yes, the cell tower, uh, revenue that we would receive for having those in a park if. That were the case is not included in this financial budget.
Right.
Those are proposals that are being discussed at this time, uh, but there has not been a move forward from any of the companies. To request this or to, in essence, look at a conceptual plan for it. But what those cell tower companies were required to do by this board is to come to this board first. See if this board is open to the idea of having a cell tower based on their proposal. And then the next step would be for that cell tower company to go out to the community and have a very robust. Community outreach effort to make sure we're hearing the voice of the community. If there are some outstanding concerns, they have to come back to this board before they get the approval to move forward with that. So, uh, we do, as Matt mentioned, uh, require a community outreach meeting. Uh, and we ensure that they are messaging that to, of course, the immediate neighbors in a radius of approximately a mile around. The cell tower site, so, yes, there'll be absolutely opportunities, uh, as they come forward for the community to be aware of that. Good question, thank you.
Right, so I, like, I am G regular counter, there is none. Guess we'll get on to board of directors items, each one.
Thank you, item H one A is to nominate a member of the board of directors to run for election to the Sacramento Local Agency for Nation Commission, LACCO. As special district commissioner, and adopt resolution twenty-two slash twenty-three dash forty-seven. Supporting the nomination and service on the commission if elected. LACCO is comprised of seven commission members, two of which are selected by the independent special districts located within the county of Sacramento. One of the current special district commissioners' terms expires on December thirty-first of this year. The term for a commissioner is four years. This nomination is completely distinct from the special district advisory committee. On which CRP is currently represented by two board members, Director Langin, which is Office A. And Director Mark Mattis, Office B. And I did confirm with the executive director of LACCO. That members of the special district advisory committee can run for this nomination, and there is also no agency limit for representation to LACCO. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, uh. Any questions, comments, discussion, if we want to volunteer, um, I have a question. Chair Yearwood?
Sure.
Just jumping on that thing, is there a? Application process, a resume? That goes along with this, if you, if this board elects. If what's made for, I'm just, I didn't see.
I didn't see it in the material either, but typically we would provide the supporting resolution, and then the director who's interested would provide a resume.
So I think I did the one kind of like, they would have. So, anyone love more LACCO in your life?
I can say it, but I work on Monday nights, so.
Like, it's Wednesday.
Oh, that's Wednesday.
First Wednesday of the month at five thirty, oh. Where, where?
First Wednesday of the month.
The other ones are Monday, right?
Okay, do we want to go down the road and see if there's any interest in that?
We'll start down there, Director Mattis.
No, I, I don't.
Okay. No.
Oh, I was trying to try, okay.
How about you, Secretary Sloan?
I'm cool, I'm. Yeah.
Alright. Uh. Vice Chair Dan?
I am a manager of management, um, commissioner, um, will be. Somebody who has a greater voice for that, this agency, uh, so I will put my name in that.
Oh, alright. Alright, um, sorry about that.
Yeah.
There's so much, yeah, okay. Um, and I, I will, uh, I, I'm, hey, I'm more than happy to, I, you know, my, and my boss will be more than happy, I'd have to cover for me on the other night, so. Alright, well, then hey, can I make a motion, how about that? I move the board of directors nominee. Vice Chair Dan. To run for election in Sacramento Local Agency for Nation Committee. As special district commissioner, officer number seven, and adopt resolution twenty-two. Slash twenty-three dash forty-seven, supporting the nomination and service on the commission. Hold on. Same. Who seconded it? Oh, thank you, uh, motion by Chair Yearwood, seconded by Director Langin, roll call booth?
Director Mattis?
Aye.
Director Langin?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
Chair Yearwood?
Don't go, I, he volunteered, I. Alright, yeah, good luck. Can't wait to, I can put a sign in my yard. Alright, so that's all for each one, right? So we went on to H two.
Thank you, item H two A, our training reports, and there are several, so Chair Yearwood, I will let you just print that section.
Okay.
That you prefer.
Sure. Alright, well, we'll just start, uh, the first one there on the list, uh, Secretary Sloan, looks like you wrapped up your AV eighteen twenty-five sexual harassment prevention training. How'd that go?
Talking, yeah.
Or any other secretary?
It went very well, except for the, uh, the process of. Of trying to take the training on any other device beside my phone. So I had to, every question and thing, I had to scroll. Enlarge, reduce, scroll, enlarge, read. It was a bit of a challenge, and it took me a couple of times to pass the test. But I finally in flying colors passed it. And, um, it's, you know, the training's really changed a lot. You know, I, I think about the days that, you know, when I first started working for a public agency and all the rules. It's gotten so many more rules out there and things you have to be, be aware of, um. So, um, I think it's great training, I think everybody should, I think everybody, I want to take this training, they should all have to pass it, and they have to go into a different world.
The house. I have your slip?
An asteroid, something like that.
You didn't pass the training, sorry, you're going. You're living somewhere else. Good for you.
Yeah, then new things will change in two years, you know?
Well, the good is.
Don't worry, ethics training is right around the corner.
I'll say ethics training is just around the corner. Alright, okay, so, uh, we, uh, will move along to the CRPD annual conference. Held, uh, May seventeenth through the twentieth of twenty twenty-three, and Yosa might.
California, but she might.
Yosa might, um, so I guess we'll start with you, Secretary Sloan.
No, yeah, why not? Sorry, with me. Um. I'm sorry that my two other board members had, uh, their conflicts, but I think they would really enjoy this, this conflict. It, um, there was a lot of, of, uh. Personal team building kind of a thing that went on this one, it wasn't just a lot of, uh, you know, breakout session, there, someone telling you how to. Uh, use this equipment or use that, you know, kind of, and you're like. Uh, they had something that was called the forced therapy, where you went out into, you hide little ways and it's at there and you're actually. Cut the stuff and smell the roses and relax, and you take in all the, uh, things around you and it's, it's, it's building, it's really, uh. Life building kind of experience where you're healthy and all that, and I. I just recently did it out by my parkway, I, I, the river, the phone was setting, and I had the same type of experience. And the o- other part of that, because it was a two-part thing, if you're around, part of the half the group was doing that, the other part was in playing this, uh. This workshop, kind of a card game. Where they were, you're all built, every, you have all these different, uh. Projects that you're, you're trying to build, um. Put into a facility. And so, but how, what do you want, and you want, you want swimming, you want gymnastics, you want meeting spaces, and you had to play all these cards. And you had to create a budget, each one was costing a certain amount, and that, we, we all had to go prioritize and have working together, the team that come up with. You know, do we need that kind of, uh. Size of a building, or can we use that for both things, you know, it's going to be a meeting space. And a, uh, daddy daycare kind of, it'll be both, so it was very interesting, I, I think that. You, you guys would love it, I think you would have a good time, your kids would. It was a, it was, I think we loved it, as, I don't, I don't, I didn't ask you.
Even I became one with nature.
Yeah, but, uh, we should, we should, yeah, with the predator call out there, I heard, yeah, it sure did sound like the predator. Um. The other, the trade are good, the, 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 I think the top part of the whole thing is the, we had two breakout, um, roundtables. And, um, one, the second one was hosted by, uh. Chair Dan, and it really, I think it was one of the best. We've had organized one. Um, five chairs.
Oh, my God.
Oh, well, okay, I'm not going to steal his number, so, anyway, no, you can't talk about yourself. I can rate about you. It was, it was a well-leaded discussion and a lot of great topics. Um, some of the other topics were, uh, turf. Uh, fair play for girls, you know, I had that one for a long time. I had, I moved around, because I take photographs of all the people talking, but the one was beyond the surface, and that was maintaining, uh, your turf, uh. Different turf, t- trends that are happening. Um. Well, okay, I'll leave something for you guys to say, talk about the food, how about that?
Alright, Vice Chair Dan, thank you. Sure, um. Force therapy, this was the second time I've done force therapy, um. I did stay awake this time, um, yeah, those of you around the last time when we did it with the CRPD, and we went to. Paradise, um, it was very calming, very relaxed, and the instructor says, go ahead, sit however you want, relax. And sitting in nature, just listening to her, her voice, I keep telling her, I've met her several times. She just needs to do that whole speech on a, on a tape, and you know, you pay for it, it's not a problem, um. The director of Parks and Rec here, Jill, kept hoping to make sure I stayed awake, um, actually, she didn't, but we, we did have some fun with some of the flies. Um, because they felt like they were going a thousand miles around, round their heads, but it was, it was. The second time I've done it, different location this time, just as, just as meaningful, um, bigger group this time. And one of the things that we do is you can just, they ask some questions, and you kind of get to describe. What's, you know, what's your thought, thoughts or feelings were, some of the things you felt, so. I do enjoy it, um, I like to try it on a beach sometime, but, uh, not, not quite there yet. Uh, one of the other classes that I did, did take, um. Was maximum on your, um, your IRA on tax credit. That, um, yeah, we're talking taxes and credits, and. It was very interesting, because it all came down to electricity and lighting, and I was like, where's Matt when I need him? Uh, because he probably would have understood a, a, a lot more, that session was not. I think there was. Out of the seventy-six attendees to the conference, I think there was eight of us in the room, for that one, everybody else went to the, uh. The, uh, turf one or the girls, girl sports one, every, everybody just said they weren't listening to IRAs and stuff like that, um, but it was very. Very enlightening and how, how some of that applies, didn't seem much that applied to us. Um, because we're not building, currently, we're not building major facilities, we're not, you know, to be able to get those credits. We did have, um, two roundtables, um. For the board of directors. And. They, they were both great sessions thi- this year, the second one, uh, I did lead, and we had talking points, and it, it was just. It, in the past, we've had these, these meetings where it's everybody sitting in a, in a kumbaya circle, and one person gets up and then it just gets out of control. And so we had some talking points this year that we could actually go off. To try and keep that, that meeting more, more contained and not go so far off topic, because in the past, we'll get on to topics like ERAF. One, and one person runs, turns around and takes that meeting over, and nothing else gets discussed for an hour and a half. You know, we jump in the first five minutes, and then we're talking about ERAF, and most people don't understand what ERAF is, so it's. You know, you got this, the, the blank stares on people's faces, but having some of those discussion points. Um, it was interesting, some of the questions that were asked. You know, how do you measure, and my session, um, as a board member, how do you? Um, how do you measure success for your district as a board member? You know, and got twenty-five different answers from people, you know, some, well, if I get re-elected, that's, that's showing that I'm this, but. Some were like, well, if the district's doing well financially, then that's success, it doesn't matter whether I get re-elected, the district's doing well, so it was just in, interesting to see. Different points of views, um, from different agencies, we did talk about, you know, how to. How to help, um. Because our, ours was all board members. But. They, um, a lot of these board members aren't engaged with their staffs as much as I think some of us are. Um, and that's not, not a good thing, not a bad thing, but some of them don't know anybody but their general manager, they couldn't tell me who their clerk of the board was. Who their director of parks and recs were, who their CFO was, they, they, our human resources, they had no idea who these people were. Because they've got a general manager who's, they only talk to me at all times, and if I'm not here, you're not talking to me. So it's just different to hear different agencies and how things are, and, you know, learn from different agencies, I learned that there's an agency in. In our age, within our group that has two helicopters as part of their, you know, it's like, whoa, that's. That's a big district then, you know, why do they have them and what are they using for show? Um, it was definitely a good conference, and I will let Chair Yearwood. I don't know what else he's going to talk about now.
We're going to cross off the helicopter thing.
Sorry.
It was considered, I've met, had it before the president.
Yeah, as I was saying, I had to revise the budget.
Well, that's the same one, it's like, it's East Bay, right, where they have like sixty municipalities they have to work with?
Yes.
Well, you know, there was somebody asking, how do you work with your one city or whatever, and they're all.
One city.
Well, apparently these are helicopter supply from one city to the other, but they all have like a fighter district or something, I do in charge of that, so. Yeah, so, yeah, that was, I did actually have the helicopter. Sorry, that's alright. Um, this one's talking about so great, yeah, but, um. I attended the, I don't remember what it was called, but it was the one where you had to kind of build a. A, uh, community center and all of that, and there was two scenarios, and you remember we got split up into tables of about like five and six. And one group had, uh, they had a budget, they were said, here's how much money you could spend. There was no really analysis behind what they need, what money they really needed, they just went out, got their bond passed, they got the money. The other side did all this community outreach, about all these things, that's that, the other thing, you know, helped them plan this community center. I, I was on the, one of the tables that just had the money, but not the, uh, outreach to the community, basically had staff recommendations and the city council's recommendation. And, uh, so, and it's like, okay, now, take this deck of all these amenities and figure out what you want. And you're trying to figure out from what the staff and the city thought was really, really necessary. At our table, we ended up kind of looking at the demographics to figure out what would probably be more appropriate for the, the people who encompass that, that area. So we ended up having way more money than we needed to build a palace. Yeah, we didn't, oh yeah, we, we didn't spend all of our money. Uh, we ran, we only had an hour or something, not even doing a deep dive, but, um, so it was very interesting to, to not have. Kind of like all the outreach from the, the community members and things like, what they were looking for, you were basically just going off of the city council wanted. And with city staffs, or the district staff said you should get, so. So we kind of included some of those things, but also looked other places, so that one was interesting. Um, and then in the afternoon, I went off for my force therapy. Uh, it was, I, I feel like I was skeptical, but it was alright, it was okay. Uh, it was interesting to hear after every little session, you know, and she'd ask these questions about what, you know, what were you thinking about, or, you know, whatever, and everybody would kind of share. Very interesting, I, like, right? Okay, uh, it was, it was, um, it was interesting, yeah, so. Uh, and then, uh, sat in the one, one roundtable with the, the one where we found out about the massive district of all the helicopters and. Um, I don't remember who that facilitator of that first day one was, but. Doug, Doug Nichols kept, ran a tight ship, yeah. No taking over the meetings, no, uh, no, just speaking out of turn, so, uh, he was a, a force to be reckoned with. Uh, and then the next day, on the Friday, what was? Um, I said one about the capital, the tenure capital improvement plans. I don't know, it was two-year, and two-year budget, this guy was really pushing two-year budgets, because he believes in two-year budget, two-year budgets. Um, so that, what I think.
Um so that, what I think was, I would say it was probably more geared towards staff and things like that as opposed to board members, but. Um and then I sat in on the one that taught me so much about synthetic services. And the life and the beginning and now and uh how all the hits are just like the organic way to go. The rubber tires and so, but it was, it was interesting. I uh, I would have probably been. Uh more interested in the one about, I think it's female sports, but I went into that one and I, I stuck it out, I was a trooper, so. But it was, it was good, it was an overall great conference and um. You know, it's always good to get with other folks that are, are your peers and equals and just talk about what's going on and. How you handle your things and, you know, whatever, usual stuff, so that is all I have on that. Uh we started to do the board retreat, well, okay, all right, board retreat. Uh on six twelve twenty twenty-three, am I gonna start with you, Secretary, someone started all the way down there and began with Director Matt.
Oh, that was great because uh areas with mine too, because I used to live in Anatolia and uh Cabala Ranch, moved out of Anatolia about uh. October of twenty twenty, so it was kind of good going back to the old neighborhood, seeing the development and the growth. That's happened since then, I was blown away by what's coming in, and it's exciting to see what's coming in. And it's glad to see that there's uh plots land, I'm actually glad that the developers are. Moving forward the parks as they're building. I remember when I was at Cabala Ranch, but that was also when the market tanked. And I was one of the six homes and then they left. And so that park decided to be for years until I moved out of there. Um to Anatolia. But yeah, it, it's really good to see the growth going on down there and it's gonna be exciting to see for the next twenty, thirty, forty years what happens and comes to that area. And it was also a great time to spend time with everybody, hear stories and we had a great tour guide. It was a great, great time.
All right, uh Director Ling. Yes, so uh it was a great time, had a lot of fun. Um tour guides were amazing. And uh it just, it, it, it really is cool. Um kind of grown up. Uh in Sacramento area and just being able to see the development and think back to when I was in elementary school and arrowship was still. You know, doing their thing and, and um we'd have to like, remember, oh, if there's a lot of buildings, probably just arrow shots, not that big. Um and so just to see, you know, like that, all that stuff out there is, is getting developed and um. Just to see th- that there, there's gonna be parks and the, the developers are thinking ahead about that instead of, you know. Afterwards or whatever uh is, is good and it's exciting for uh those families that will be able to move in and, and have a good fun parks will play it.
Thank you, sir. Uh Secretary. Well, I think next time I'll be trying to actually have a helicopter ride. During the same tour, maybe we can borrow East Bay or, so you can come by and pick us up. You can have cola, you can have a helicopter. It's, to see that, to see the land before it's developed, very interesting. You know, uh I almost kind of wish I had some of the glasses you can put on that shows it developed. You can see it in the future, kind of like appear around you. Um and we also drove by a lot of our existing parks that are out there, which are still jammed in, in the out, outer, outer area there. That uh we stopped off and did some, you know. So, soul searching with some of the parks, it's, it's. To see how we, how far we've come and then to, to realize we have. That much more distance to go, you know, to develop and that's, it's a lot of, it's an envy of, I think, a lot of the uh. The districts in the state of California because they don't have a lot of growth there yet. We have, we're gonna go inside. The next twenty, thirty years, it's crazy. Um and. Just to drive by this, this land and I'm thinking, if we, if we know where the park's gonna be, let's plant the trees now. So when we have the tree, when they're ready, we've got to build a park, we've got big trees to, for the shade. If that's possible, that'd be kind of cool, but I, I appreciated the district putting that together with the, it was an interesting way of having a retreat. That was a, a real treat.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks, Chair Daniel. So this was the first block where I think we've done some twenty ten. Um out the dis- of the district um. District has definitely grown from, from where we sat in twenty ten. We continue to grow as we heard earlier tonight, we've got six more parks, coming probably ten in the next, you know, three years, which is incredible. And that's not even talking Rio de la Roya, I mean, we're, that's, that's another huge community park that we'll eventually get there. Um so, but it, like, like other directors have said, seeing, seeing things with, you know, dirt and. Knowing eventually that it's gonna be a beautiful green. Green grass area with play, play stretch oscillator, basketball court, tennis court, pickleball court. Um credit field, whatever. Um it's, it's amazing to see, you know, where, where we've come from. As Director Lyman said, growing up in the community, um I remember as a small child launching, you know. Estes rockets in this very spot before city, city hall was built, you know, the casino was right there, but it was. Um a different building at the time, you know, this was just open land. You had, you know, drive a four-wheel drive truck out here on the dirt and everything, so to watch the community grow and. Continue to watch it grow is just amazing and the great things that come when we do put parks. In our communities is just, I, I look forward to.
I think you're referencing the Chesapeake Ocean. That's what the casino was originally.
It was a Chesapeake pub and they were kind of.
I was, I was shocked for quite a few years, yes, back in the day, it was originally Chesapeake, but um. It, it was, uh, it was a nice to have a bus tour of my neighborhood, thank you all for coming. Um but. I was just thinking about the other day, because when I moved, we moved into Crestley Ranch three years ago. And Montalena was barely getting started, the ranch hadn't even started. I swear Cypress had four houses, now it's got hundreds, I know it was more than that, but it's just. Every other day, there's something else being built, you know, that shopping center across the way from the Rayleigh's hadn't even started yet and uh. So, but again, it was, it was nice to get out and see the district and take us all the way out to that uh. Easterly boundary and all that, it's kind of amazing how big the district is when you go and drive it, so. Uh it was, again, it's always nice to get together and we did afterwards have a nice meal and chat and got to know each other a little better, that's always a good thing. So and uh, so yes, I think uh. Our general manager is one of our tour guides and Laura Taylor, other, other uh, what was our driver's name? Dawn, Dawn did wonderful, we did walk the road hardly. But uh, so yes, it was, it was, it was nice, it's always nice to get together and in fact, it was a little field trip last fall was really, was good too. So, all right, I think uh that wraps that up, so. Let's hit the B, community activity reports and comments. So uh.
Carry on.
Oh, carry on. All right, all right, so, so I guess we'll do what we always do, we'll start down at the end with Director Matt.
Uh we went to uh French River Little League in the season, uh on May twentieth, that was a blast. Out there to celebrate the end of the season and it was just a great season, especially with the weather this year is held up. It was just a really nice time, it was a big, big turnout, so they had really good uh. Uh prizes and they had some fundraising going on, so I think they did pretty well. Uh. Celebrated, went to the fiftieth anniversary with uh the low steamers. That was a blast, I took my kids, they loved that and I remember when I was their age going there, so it was, it was fun seeing their, their eyes just pop up. And being able to ride these trains. Um. Went to the Sacramento Laffo Special District Advisory Committee, that was, that was interesting, learned a lot about water districts and how those functions work. Um so looking forward to the next one. Um we had the Fetterfield uh Park Improvement, I was glad they were able to make it out to that one, that was good, so it was. It was interesting, it was, it was great hearing the story of how it started and so the communities, remember as a kid, there used to be the pool there and. Other things over the years, so it was nice seeing that there's new development or new um elements of the park being added to improve it for the community. Um made it out to the uh, get a scoop with Sheriff Cooper at Rosemont Park on June fourth and that was a fun time because um. I remember I was in fourth or fifth grade and uh Cooper, when he was the uh anti-game force cop at the time. Came to my school and presented, you know, anti-drug, all this stuff. And while I mentioned it to him, I said, hey, I remember, do you remember watching your career in that uh. The teacher that I had was lesbian and size lit up and so that was, you know, that was his best friend in high school. And I've always remembered those two moved together and shared some stories about lesbian because I ran into him uh years later. When I was coaching and uh we reconnected and that's when I found out what was going on and it was just blew me away. Uh but it was nice uh talking to Cooper and um we had our budget workshop.
All right, uh, Frank. Yeah, so um June third, uh the Rosemont Community Art Poles Installation Day. Uh went out there, uh I really just wanna uh really compliment um Mark, the landscape supervisor. Uh he was teaching and, and he just did a great job uh and really uh there's the Girl Scout troop that was there. They were amazing, but, but what really impressed me was he um. Let a lot of other people do the work and, and, and uh taught the girls how to do stuff as, you know, cement and. Spreading bark and uh all, all that good stuff. Um and the girls got, they worked super hard. Um I, I was really impressed with how hard they were working, how much they did. Uh I would say uh they probably put in the majority of those poles. Um and so it was, it was cool just, just to see that. Um I came there, I was like, yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll definitely work, I'll keep dirty, like, I don't mind that kind of stuff. And like, they were just like, all, all in it, so it was good, it was great. Um. And it was just cool to, to see more of that project um and to be able to be a part of it. Uh as it, as it uh, as it goes on. Um and then uh June seventeenth. Um the uh dedication for the uh art community to Rosemont Community Park. Um it was really unfortunate that they got vandalized just a few days earlier, but once again, uh the CRPD staff did a great job of cleaning them. Getting all the um black spray paint off, not all of it, but the majority, so you can still tell what uh the poles were. Um and just uh what they, what they said or the artwork that was on them and so um thankfully we had. Refused up on them already, so that was, that was good and definitely thankful for that. Um and then just being able to hear from the different groups that did a whole um at the event, uh which is cool to, to hear uh what those polls submitted them. And also it was just great to see the uh community out there in support um of the event and of the project. So looking forward to uh phase two of that project and seeing uh when that uh will, will roll on. And then um the budget workshop session today, I think it'll be first, great time. Ready, I've said, great.
Yes, yes, I agree. All right, Secretary, so you're up.
On May thirteenth, uh I took part in the WH Williamson Park ribbon cutting presentation. It was uh nicely attended, it was a beautiful day. Um we had a photograph that I believe appeared in the uh something or. The next thing was on the May twentieth, we drove from uh, you know, seventy. Uh all the way to the Hagan Park from the Sacramento Valley Large Steamers, Rover Museum fifty anniversary. I walked towards the uh, the area which was where that little waterfall there was about spring. Where they actually held the same event fifty years ago for. Uh for the, I think it was uh, at that time. It was, I forget how many, the, the many uh uh. Feet of track they have, but we, they've got like, now they have like close to eight thousand feet of track out there, I think they started a couple. A thousand or something. Um. The next thing was, the, that same day, I, I walked over and I met some other people from this group here. To the California Mermaid Convention at uh, at the Corolla Community Pool. And it's always nice to uh see what's going on with that convention, it seems to be one of like very large industry, I've heard something on the news usually how. The things for, to buy and, and the certificates that you can get. You have to get to be able to hold your breath a certain amount of time and water and. And become a certified mermaid, I mean. None of that movie Splash was one of my favorite movies, Daryl Hannah. Um the next one was the Breka, we had our steering committee meeting and um. On the agenda was uh unfortunately, the, this crisis that happened to our little library out there has been. Vandalized and this was, there was some altercation in the park, it happened at night uh and then, but somehow the library got. Ruined again, so um the Breka Steering Committee is now proposing to create. Put up a, you know, those, the Sacramento Bee boxes or metal that you, they have out the Corolla by the, you pull the thing down, you grab a paper of it. Probably will make it into a, a library. Comes like, so if you would hit that with a baseball bat, you probably not gonna do that much damage, you hit the wooden house of people. Create, they destroy them, they just blow them up. So that's a thought. And there was someone in the uh Breka uh community, it's also a welder, that he, he might put together a uh. Make it look like a house, you know, not just, not to look like a bee box. It's gonna be painted, it's gonna have a roof on it, it's gonna be really cool, I hope. I hope that uh, that's the difference where that is, uh it's gonna be, hopefully happen, so. Might be a new trend. The next thing was the, on June second, the Fetterfield Park Lockway Improvement Celebration and Ice Cream Social. When you get ice cream from Richard's Ice Cream, that was nice, uh we had a ribbon cutting on the, on the neutral, I think. Uh Vice Chair Ganzel walked in and he said it was bridal, I think I'm gonna work.
It's okay, it's a fair one.
Um but it was, it was, it was a nice little celebration. Uh on June second, that same night, I, I ran over to uh Capital Village, Village Green Park. And uh they had the uh CC, a movie in the park. Of this Corolla Community Council, the Moonlight Movie, one of the first one of the, of, of the year. They're doing five out there, this one. Rosemont Community Art Pole Installation Workday, I showed up, I got there about uh maybe twenty minutes into the work level, maybe half hour. Basically, they had already planted all the poles, the net was mixed, everything was up and going, they were spreading the bark. Um which I thought was kind of nice, you know, as I say, it takes a do it, man, I just think, boom, they, they knocked those things out and. And they, they looked, they looked beautiful and um. And then uh I, uh on June fourth, I attended the Get the Scoop with Sheriff Cooper, I thought of the burgers and badges. Um but it was nice because you could walk around, you could be a kid, see all the uh different robotic uh. Uh devices that the law enforcement had and some of their SWAT machines, SWAT, SWAT team material and. Uh vehicles, helicopter. And have a hamburger and some, an ice cream bar. Um. The next one was a rent-a-cruel athletic association meeting, I attended that on June sixth. And um with that, I, I, I think they're going to approach, because it came up about. Renovation projects and how to keep them maintained after they've already been completed. Just something that we've dealt with for years, they call it sustainability and how you can, if you're gonna. Have a new park, you gotta be able to maintain it, so that's, they might be coming to ask for some assumptions on that, the part that they're. Also, they, they came up with uh, something they were, they were talking about. Whether if you're a joint use with a school district and park, you have a joint user agreement. Does that mean that they share our insurance? If they have something like a Mitchell Middle School, if they had something in their gym. Would that be shared with, covered by the parks? Insurance. So that was the only thing that I, I think spent some, we, I think we might have talked to you about. But that was one thing on their list that they were gonna look into. Um, but, and also September ninth, the Rancho Corolla Hall of Fame. Is gonna be happening, so I guess they'd be aware of that. Oh, the next one was Rosemont Community Heart, Art Poles Dedication. It was uh, it was, I was very sad when I got the email from GM Larkin. So you, I ran out there that night to look at it and. I had seen what, I didn't see what it looked like before. I only heard that they were spray painted black. One was pretty red and silver. And it doesn't make sense to me why someone would wanna do that. Especially do something that was so beautiful and usually people respect artwork. Um, so it's, it, it goes beyond what I, the people I think. Were thinking. It wasn't just, you know, vandalism, it was something else. Um, and there was nowhere else in the park that was that much, nothing else. Um, but it was, we still had community members could stand up and speak and have, held their head up high and say. We did it. We, we created an image of park and area and we put a lot of resources together. And to be proud of it and it always will be. And, and, and actually, if you look at them, like the Richter language was saying. If you hadn't seen it before, you basically saw a pole that looked like it was just aged, it looked like it was antiquated. So it, it had a lot of character to them. The messages were a little bit wiped out because the black. They were painting with black paint too, and so maybe they were trying to get down, get rid of the name. We probably could go over and just touch up the black and state this. Um, the next thing, I think the last thing on my list is. Is when I worked out today. Um, I, I wasn't even thinking, I didn't, I don't have these on my list, but I did go out to Hagan Park for the Juneteenth on Friday. They had a great uh. Pretty good Sacramento Urban League, put on a. Um, great uh, celebration of Juneteenth. And I was out there and I was like part of my family and enjoying that. And they also had something on Father's Day, I went out to Lincoln Village Park, the park and. The Bicycle Advocates for Rancho Cordova, put on another Juneteenth event. And um, which featured booths and, and Black Home operated businesses and. Who's nice, but another celebration and I think. I think there's more to come. Juneteenth still, still happening. Juned, a great year, a great month for lots of things to happen. I said, all right.
Thank you, sorry. Now, this is, this was quite a month, that's for sure. Last year, Dan. You're up.
I am. Oh, I'm just shy of what Derek Sloan did by one event, so I'm not going to. I'm going to get as many details. Um, I did attend the WH Williamson uh, Park Ridden Cutting. It was. You know, another park in our district, which is, you know, great um, to be there and with the Williamson family, things like that. Uh, we've spent some time with them and we're very happy for their donation of that park then and very happy to have that park. That was May thirteen, May seventeen, CARPD uh, Board Meeting. That was the, um, before the conference started. Um, just going over assignments for the, the, the week, knowing what's gonna happen, where financially we are, um, things like that. It was an interesting meeting. Um, I got, as I said earlier, in my, uh, one of my earlier reports, I did get selected to be a. Moderator for something and I just told that in the back that, since I did such a good job, that I will be continuing to do that till I'm no longer on that board. I was like, yay. Um, made after the conference, um, along with. Chair Yearwood and Secretary Sloan, we all made that long trek. Back to Sacramento, Yosemite, for the Sacramento Valley Live Steamer and General Manager Larkin. Uh, we all did make that trek back to Sacramento, the Live Steamer's fiftieth anniversary and the California Mermaid. Convention on our, on our properties. So great celebrations for both, um. And uh, they keep growing, uh, live steamer. I was amazed how many people were there. Um, but they, they had people literally from all over the country that came. But hearing the history of, of, you know, where they started and where they are, things like that. And they've actually recently been. Um, they were featured on Facebook in the, uh, one of the California magazines is who, who they were that had just added. And they were showing old, old photos, which was kind of neat. So I shared that with the group because I didn't know that they were being featured. It just happened to be. Something that they uh, that was there. Um, on June second, I did head out to. Um, Colonel Golf Course at Demo Days out there. Um, staff does a great job getting. Um, people out there um, to help sit close and show, show our clients out of the golf course. That there, there are new, new clubs out there that will actually improve your game. Um, I am one of those, not this time, but I have been in the past. Um, I have gone out there and hit, hit golf balls and ended up buying new clubs. So it's great. There's a couple of different vendors that we have that come out. Um, I know that we've got another one coming. Eventually, um, Gordon Ball, we're out there, he says he's looking at a new date and wasn't sure when that was yet, but. Is very excited and he, he enjoys doing it. Um, June second, uh, Fetterspill. Park, uh, Walkway. Uh, as I said earlier, it is something I talked to the staff about. Fifty years ago, sixty years ago, sixty-five years ago, that park was built. It was a park and as we know, parks back then, it was green grass. And I looked at Laura Taylor and Christina James and I'm like, can you imagine building a park? In twenty twenty-three without a walkway? And, and they won't look at me and they're like, it would never happen. I can't do that anymore. Um, it's like, you, you have, you have to have it. I mean. Sure, you're with, I both grew up in there and there were some sidewalks in the community when we grew up. Everything was just curved and you walked through it. So to see that part, part now have that walkway, it's, it's, it's gorgeous. It's constantly used. Uh, the community truly appreciates it. Um, later that night, I did go over to Moviesome Park. Um, I did also on June fourth, I did head over to. Um, scoop with Sheriff Cooper over the Rosemont Community Park, the great. Thing, the, you know, what the, uh, what law enforcement is available and their assets for the community. Um, on June seventh, I did have a. Post-conference CARPD Board Meeting to go over, get new committee assignments because we do have a new uh, president this year. I was elected president-elect, uh, but we were given new uh. New committee assignments by the president. Um, I did change some committees. I did. Become the uh, Chair of the Conference Committee. That first meeting is August seventh. Um, so if anybody has any ideas where they might wanna go, we could get some back from the members, um. And we do have a date for that. It is the third weekend, I believe in May. I, I will give that to you after the meeting, Mr. Jones. But we um. You know, went through the financials, showed how we, how we did, you know, how many people came. There was a concern I had. Um, in a, in attendance, we had more, we had about the same amount of people that attended in Tahoe. That attended in Yosemite, but we had ten less districts represented. So that was a concern of mine because the secretary had seen that listed, who was actually there. So I wanted to know why, why that was different. I mean, this, this board typically sends three, three or five people. So that didn't concern me, but what, what drew, drew, you know, ten less districts to come to Yosemite? Was it location? Was it cost? Was it? And I'm still trying to figure out those answers. And then last thing that I had was today's primary budget. Chair Yearwood, it is your.
Oh, right. Good thing I went to a bunch of different things.
Um, is more happening?
You have one. Uh, so I as well, I made thirty, uh, attended the ribbon cutting for WH Williamson Park. A nice little infill park and I shared with the, our general manager, dates already being used in home sale ads to. As a reason to buy a house over in Mills Ranch. So it was prominently displayed in somebody's uh, Realtors photos. Uh, and then let's see here, yes, uh, obeying all speed limits required for Yosemite and Sacramento, I'll be back to the. Kind of Live Steamer's fiftieth anniversary. Uh, it was a really nice event, uh. You know, I, I rode on those little trains when I was a kid. All my daughters rode on those little trains when they were kids. Um, it, it was an amazing event. Uh, it was nice to hear from the folks who kind of started it, talking about all the. Collaboration they had with district staff and. They can just come over and say, what are you doing there? Oh, hold on, I got this better piece of equipment that'll do it for you in two hours as opposed to you. Doing it by hand over a couple of weekends. So it was wonderful to hear those stories of all the, over the years, the people that helped them. Uh, and yes, it has definitely grown. I had no idea that so many people came. There was, I'm having cameras there. It was, I was like, wow, this is like, yeah, I, I guess I don't ever get out to that. So. Uh, and then the mosey on over to the old Mermaid Convention. Uh, I was there last year. It's definitely a lot bigger, a lot bigger this year. So, uh, that's nice to see. Uh, and then let's see on, uh, I skipped over anything. On June second, uh, the Fetterspill Park Walkway Crew Celebration. Uh, always nice that that was the park I grew up in as a kid to see it looking so nice and the pathways are amazing, uh, so. And uh, Angel Hall and all her hard work paid off. So. Uh, and I do, I drive by every once in a while, cutting through to somewhere else. And there's always people out there walking or dogs or doing something. So it's really nice. Um, stopped by uh, on the June second as well, over to the Moon, Moonlight Movies. It did last Friday as well. So uh. Perfect weather so far. Lucky they haven't had a lot of hot weather. So, um, that's nice, uh. And I get the scoop with Sheriff Cooper on uh, June fourth, I was there as well. With several other directors. It was a nice event. Uh, it is amazing, all the equipment they have. I don't know if anybody made it out to search or rescue with. But next to it was a very cool mobile communication center. The four ladies were out there all by their own. So this thing was pretty. Uh, I won't say it was pretty bad, something you could figure out the other word. But uh, and it was nice to have a chance to chat with a former Lancer, uh, Sheriff Cooper. So he wasn't happy that he was the oldest Lancer in the, in the group, but uh, so I was in the middle. But uh, it was nice talking to him. Uh, and let's see, Leadership Ranch Corolla Graduation on June eighth. I was there to recognize class sixteen. Sure, sure, was it sixteen?
Yeah.
Whatever's down here.
Sixteen.
Thank you. Shelby confirms it was sixteen. It is great. It was wonderful. Yeah, eight is wonderful. Um, uh, it's great. Uh, so, but it was very nice. I've been to one of those in a couple of years. So they had one, their project was phenomenal and. Uh, I was lucky enough to be the only elected there, so I got to do the toast. Uh, so uh. And then let's see, uh, what else? Oh, the preliminary budget workshop. And I'm just gonna run through real quick, mass presentation of everybody at time. I had recap that. Yes, it's two, it's two hour. Yeah. So that's all I have. So I guess we will. Let me take a look here. We got some intervals. Moving on to item I, comments by staff by non-adjutant items.
Thank you. Item I went into District Five Hundred and Six Hundred Report for June and I'll turn it over to General Manager Larkin.
So you all stole my thunder as well, apparently, because I was along with the journey with you at most of these events that you've recorded down on already. Uh, so I'll spare the audience the details. I'm reviewing all of that. Um, we have some updates. Uh, just today, we were notified by our new office from the tenant improvements that we have passed all inspections. Our inspections and the permit from the city of Rancho Cordova. Uh, we will be officially moving out of this building on Tuesday, June twenty-seven. Uh, the furniture movers are coming that day. Uh, so it can take a little while to get settled in. Um, so we're excited. Of course, you know, we passed all those inspections. They've done an amazing job with these tenant improvements who are. Excellent to work with. The crew was uh, very flexible. Um, and so we're excited to move in, of course. Uh, just so there's a note, um, we will be actually meeting in here. Uh, at City Council Chambers for the month of July and August. With the hopes of moving into the board, uh, official new board room. Uh, for CRPD in September, pending everything technologically goes through, all the furniture, all that good stuff is ready to roll. So that's very exciting news. Uh, we met with Folsom Corolla Unified School District Staff. Uh, they had come to us. Uh, with a proposal for their unhoused families and students in their school district to work with our foundation. On allocating some funds that we typically have the foundation support, our fee assistance program. Uh, they decided to fund the entire program, five thousand dollars this year. And two thousand dollars of that will be earmarked for specifically those kids in the school district. Uh, we'll be working with those staff to help those families fill out those forms that are required. Uh, and then help them register for the program so that more kids could participate in our programs. Without having to worry about, you know, their address or their forms or, or, you know, what they needed in order to participate. So we're really excited about that expansion. Uh, with that program, uh, kind of touches the heartstrings on that for our, our foundation is willing to support that as well. Uh, we have, uh, I just want to congratulate Shelby Golden. She was an amazing representative for Chover Recreation Park District at the Chamber of Commerce Leadership. Uh, program this year. The project was fantastic. And so thank you Shelby and congratulations for completing that program. Uh, Matthew also was a part of that program who just left. He's in August number this evening. Uh, we have some overall resources are available, um, is two hundred and seventy-one thousand seven fifty overall resources used. So our budget is really looking quite well coming towards the final stretch here. Matt, you did a fantastic job with the preliminary budget. I know how hard you worked on it as well as the staff to get us to that point. So kudos to all of the staff that contributed to uh, that body of work. But Matt, always again. Quite a great job with your presentation and making things complex as simple as possible. So we all appreciate that. Um, in HR, we successfully onboarded almost eighty new and returning recreation staff. Uh, to assist us with the aquatics camps, kiosk and cashier positions. Um, we have our second round of community outreach meetings coming forward. In the months of July and August for our optimized plan. Uh, we will officially share with those. Uh, those dates and locations with the board. We're intending to have one webinar and two uh, in-person community outreach meetings. One of the community outreach meetings will be slated for Prospect Hill Park in Gold River. And the second one will be at Lincoln Village Park during a family swim night. So more uh, dates specifically and times are coming your way. Just wanted to give you that for your radar. Uh, we did get honored with some funding uh, this past month and also an update on the Rosemont Community Park Tennis Courts. Uh, we have, it's been out to bid and the bids will be opened next week, June twenty-ninth. We will go with the lowest, most responsible bidder and we're excited. We had a pre-walk bid. And there were eleven uh, contractors that were interested in the project. Uh, so we're excited to see uh, what the variety is of those interested in helping us get that project uh, completed. We also received uh, an SHRA CDBG grant from Sacramento County. For the Rosemont Community Park Miners Field Outfield Fence Replacement for ninety-three thousand five hundred and sixty-four. We're very excited about that. Uh, to make those improvements on the fence lines. There are some utilities on that fence line there that we're hoping to make it safer. For the players where those will now be redrawn, I believe, so that those utilities are on the outside of the fence instead of the inside of the field. Um, we also received another SHRA CDBG grant for sixty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-five. To do Henley Park Accessible Pathways. So the county has been very generous with us lately. Um, and I give a lot of credit to the Rosemont Community for their advocacy, uh, their bringing to the attention of Board of Supervisors. Uh, they're bringing to the attention of Board of Supervisors, the needs that are in that community, and they've done a fantastic job. Uh, with advocacy and we really appreciate that. An update at the Larchmont Tennis Courts. Uh, they will start the repair work next Monday, June twenty-sixth. And it will go for an entire week. The staff have signed it. It will be closed for the week. And we're hoping to have it completed by next Friday and reopened for the public and especially our tennis lessons. That we're planning on for the following Saturday. Uh, Exploration Park is currently bidding uh, for this project. It's anticipated that it will be under construction this summer. Um, and it will be open to the public in the spring of twenty twenty-four. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our amazing Director of Parks and Recreation, Jill Bets.
Good evening. Um, Secretary Sloan, I just want to answer your question about the insurance. Um, with any kind of joint use agreements or MOUs, um, each one of those organizations does need to have their own insurance. So even though, for example, we have a joint use agreement with the Balsam Cordova Unified School District, they provide us with. A certificate of insurance every year, and then we also provide them with a certificate of insurance every year so that they have that. Just in case we use any of the facilities. So that helps answer your question.
Well, I think they were talking about if, if a, say, Rancho Cordova Athletic Association. Had like the, the, uh, competition in the gym for youth.
Any kind of rental, you're still going to be a certificate. So even like for us, if somebody rents out, um, let's just say, uh, the Major Sports Complex. For a day, they still need our certificate of insurance. Correct. Yeah. Um, lots going on in the Parks and Recreation world. It is summer. Yay. Doesn't feel like summer, but it is summer. So lots going on. Obviously, you all, um. Had a chance, some of you had a chance to stop by the Mermaid Con- Convention. We're happy to be able to, um. Have that convention at the Cordova Community Pool. Hope to have that again next year. We had a couple of, you know, community events throughout the month of June. In recreation, they are crazy busy, um, but we are proud to announce that we have partnered up with the Rancho Cordova Library to get kids reading this summer. So starting uh, June first, that was, um, and running through August fifteenth is when the program started, is June. Going through August fifteenth, the Summer Reading Challenge incentivizes children to read over the summer. By offering them prizes for the number of books they read. So for every book a child reads, they accumulate points. Once they accumulate a certain number of points, they're allowed to pick a prize. And one of the prizes is to come to the Cordova or the Lincoln Village Community Pool for a swim. So we're hoping a lot of kids take advantage of that system. Um, and that points and get some, you know, good reading in the summer and take advantage of anything they can do in the community, uh, but hopefully they can come to one of our pools. Um, let's see. Uh, in the youth flag football world, we, um, started our league on Friday, May twelfth. We kicked off our largest ever NFL youth flag football league under the likes of the Major Sports Complex, which is pretty exciting for those kids. So we're excited for the youth flag football league and our Pee Wee Sports is also continuing to grow and flourish. It's one of our most popular youth, um, classes. And we'll be offering it again all summer long. So we're excited for all the youth and bill programs going on around the districts. Obviously, the pools are in full use. Um, full scheduling of, um, both uh, swim teams, the cordettes, as well as the blue marlins, as well as open swim and then swim lessons galore. So, uh, hopefully the weather gets a little bit warmer for people to be able to, um, enjoy the pool and the pool deck, uh, with some sun, sun shining on them. And then parks, they're always crazy busy. Uh, but on page ninety-five, you'll see that one of our park staff, um, John Schwartz. Um, you know, re-um, vitalized a Dave Roberts, uh, Community Park sign. Uh, I'm actually really impressed. Um, so you can see on the left, there's a picture of what it looked like and. We had to make several repairs to it and then you, on the right, you can see the bottom product, product. So super proud of John Schwartz and thank him. Uh, for his contribution to making sure that that sign gets back to, um, what it used to look like. And then, you know, park staff's just, just crazy busy with all the parks, mulching, uh, mowing. Over at Hagan Community Park, we did finally get the playground repairs, um, finalized for the playground that, uh, was set on fire. And so that's all set and done. And then our staff got some training in scissor and boom lift, which is really, really key for our district. And so the district was able to purchase two lifts, uh, which of course require training and certifications. So the net rentals came out. Training eighteen of our supervisors and full-time staff in the operating, the safety of the scissor lift and boom lift. And what this will help us do is obviously continue to help maintain our parks, the lights, uh, tennis courts lights, pathway lights, um, some tree, you know. Small tree pruning if we need to do it and a whole bunch more, anything within our facilities. So. We're happy and appreciate again the board's support and being able to get those lifts. And then we continue. To operate in the most effective and efficient ways to, to rent one of those for the days about, you know, eight hundred dollars. And so. It's nice to have our own that we can just trailer to whatever location we needed, um, to get those repairs done. So, um. For us out on the lifts. Marketing Communications, who are busy, uh, just like you guys all reported. A lot of our staff. Um, Shelby and her staff were out at some of those events. Um, on May thirteenth, obviously the William H, uh, Williamson Park. Um, they are out representing, um, the district to take some photos. Um, out on June second at Fetterfield and then a whole bunch of other events. So I'm really proud that we're getting out, um. You know, to these events, representing CRPD with our booth and just information. So the community knows who, who we are and what we represent. So Shelby, thank you and your staff for, um, coordinating all that. And then the golf course, again, just looking amazing. Uh, the weather has helped, of course, the cooler weather. Uh, but we, uh, do have an accomplishment is the, the judge netting has finally come out after almost a year. At least a year, not even more than a year, and they were able to finish the extension of the netting. So we now have, um, a tall. Driving range netting, um, pretty much in a U shape around the driving range. So that's really going to help those neighbors to the east that unfortunately, for some reason. You know, the district in the past did not decide to put up a full, you know, sized net at that point. Uh, but now we do. And so, so hopefully that will help protect some of, um, you know, the businesses and cars that park over in that east property. So yay, it's finally done. Super excited. And then they made some other adjustments, um, to the netting. And then they put up some netting in another gap that was closest to our parking lot and by Jackson Road. And then, uh, and some other good news, on May twenty-third, um, Darryl, um, who is our golf course manager, has been working with the Sacramento Tree Foundation. And they have granted us fifty-seven new drought tolerant shade trees. To be planted strategically around the course free of charge. Um, and so that is quite the accomplishment and something that if you've been out to the Cordova Golf Course, you know, we've lost many, many trees over the years. Again, trees were planted that just are not, you know, drought tolerant trees. And so over the next, you know, starting in the fall and over the next couple of months after that. We'll start planting those trees, um, with some help of some volunteers. Uh, board members hopefully and some staff to get that done. But we're super excited that we were able, um. To get that. And we're grateful to the Sacramento Tree Foundation for their willingness to, you know, provide us with those trees. So yay for that. Great job. And then we have, uh, lots of, uh, events coming up. I know you just attended a lot of events, but we've got some more coming up in the next, uh, month or so. Uh, National Hot Dog Day, um, is over at the, uh, NOSAC. On Wednesday, July nineteenth at eleven-thirty. I know Chase will be over there as Hot Dogs is one of his favorite. But before that, we do have, um, this is a small event happening at the Hagan Community Park. Called the, uh, Fourth of July Celebration. So, um, I know that you all know about that. Uh, we know that, um, Vice Chair Danzel will be working that event. Um, but come on out Monday, July third or Tuesday, July fourth from four to eleven PM. We also have some staff that will be out there working. Um, alongside the Cordova Community Council, and we appreciate Parks and all the work that they put into, to this very large event. So thank you, Jim and his staff. Um, and then the Fourth of July Parade, this is the first time since I've been here that we have participated in the Fourth of July Parade. So one of our brand new supervisors, we kind of, um, she gives a short shout and she is, um, in charge of the, the parade. And so I know Patrick had an opportunity to chat with each one of you. So if you are interested in being part of our float. Um, please let Patrick know and then we will pass that information on to Nicole. So she knows to look for you on July fourth. Uh, we don't know where our float is starting from yet. We'll know that, uh, sometime next week. I think they were actually having a meeting tonight about it. Um, if I can recall. So we should know soon when and where we will, um, meet. But we'll get that information out to anyone. We're really actually super excited to be a part of, um. The July fourth parade and we are obviously going to celebrate our sixtieth anniversary for our code. So look forward to that. Uh, the synchronized swim team does have an opera show. Um, you are all invited to come to the opera show on Saturday, July fifteenth, starting at six o'clock. And then our big party in the park. Uh, which is going to be on a Saturday morning this time because the evenings are getting a little warm for people. And so Saturday, July twenty-second, ten AM till one PM at Rosemont Community Park. Who is that? That completes and finishes and finalizes my report.
Why? Thank you. Wonderful report. Appreciate that question. Well, sure. Um, did you say that the cordettes at six or six thirty?
It's six, so six to eight PM, but it's really starts at six.
Okay. Um, yeah. Also, I don't know if you guys are aware of the David Jared Oldwick, the artist, you know, the, the, the new part on July fourth. You know who that is? The guy who paints these crazy things and turns it over and becomes like. Oh, wow. Oh, my God. That would be something to behold. Um, there, it, it, he's painting three paintings and they have some, you know, to with, uh, something in the range of, 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 I have no idea what it is. The video will all roll in the attitude that you can buy. But, uh, the point of the, said you got, it'll, it, it, it can be very interesting. And I think there's a contract before that. Um, also, I want to ask a question. Are we doing an actual study about? You know, uh, our branding out there within the community of the most that comes with, as our parks. And monuments on it. And like I, I see that David Roberts sign, that's a little small, the community park sign. About this big. Marchmont, uh, three parts of the same size, wooden side. Uh, Stone Creek, Ken, one that says, City of Rancho Cordova, Stone Creek Park. You know, it's like. All these different names out there. I wonder if there's anything down the line earmarked to. Get these things all unified.
Yes, uh, we have had different standards throughout the years. We're sixty-five years old. So. The ideal situation would be we're addressing them with the parks that currently do not even have a monument sign. Uh, so we have in the budget next year.
It'd be independent maybe?
That is one of them actually. Uh, so we're starting there incrementally. We're putting in the budget and we have been putting in the budget every year. Uh, addressing the standard. Uh, so some of the standards, uh, have recently changed. Um, based on some of the models that we have. So. The monument itself will be pretty standard. The size of the monuments from where they are now in most cases will be larger. Based on the experiences that we've already done. We're not going to replace the smaller monuments that we've done. We would look to replace like the Dave Roberts sign sooner than we would go back and replace a smaller monument sign on something that's been relatively new. Um, so yes, we have a plan. We've changed those standards and we're moving forward in that direction. Now saying that, there's also a movement that I've asked for us to consider for some of the new parks. But I'm asking to have a theme for those parks, like Exploration Park is a theme. So I wanted the staff to approach those monument signs maybe a little bit more creatively if we have the funding associated with being able to do that. So yes, overall, there'll be a standard and it is currently what, what we're seeing out there. But there are in some cases, based on what the theme of that park will be, there may be a more embellished monument sign. Uh, if we can afford it. So, uh, that's kind of our move forward, yeah.
Okay, so we will, I guess we'll move on to J, information layer.
Thank you. Item J one is our most correspondence and public outreach. We have two articles. There was one email last. For the visit, visit Rancho Cordova survey, two newsletters, and then G two is your calendar.
Excellent. I guess it's time to move on to item K. Uh, close session.
Thank you. Before I announce the item, I'll just note for the public on the call that we will close down the Zoom meeting and then restart the Zoom meeting. When we reconvene to open session. So we have one item in close session. Item K one is a liability claim pursuant to California Government Code, section five four nine five six point nine. The claimant is Linda Hamilton and the agency claim begins, it's part of a recreation and park district.
All right, I guess we will first close the session at eight fifteen. All right, we're going back into a, oop, a close session at eight thirty-six. Uh, on item K one, uh, the board voted, uh. For Nate, uh, for, uh, to reject the claim, being Director Maddens, Director Langdon. Vice Chair Daniel, Secretary Yearwood and Secretary Sloan, oh, sorry, Chair Yearwood and Secretary Sloan, they're staying. All right. So we are ready to move on to the next item. Oh, item M, Germany. Uh, we are adjourning to the next regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the Trail Recreation Park District on Wednesday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty PM. All right. We're golden.